Get it started to record. So whenever you want to begin.
Okay, well, it looks like it's eight o'clock. So if we could have the board members roll call themselves in.
Burton here.
Raymond here.
Gibbon here.
Larson here. And do we have Wayne? Did you say on phone?
Wayne is. I'm not he's having trouble. He I see him. I think he's videoing, but I think he's calling. He's there. I just don't know if he's hooked up to audio yet.
Okay, I guess we'll see if we can get him in when we do the approval of the minutes. We do have the minutes here in the packet. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes? We get a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and we'll vote.
Burton, I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
Larson, I. So I guess we're still not getting Wayne in on this.
Yeah, I see him calling someone or he's dialing. Oh, there he is. Hi, Wayne.
Hello.
There you are. Hi.
I don't seem to have any video on my Zoom here, so I called in too.
We can see you, but we couldn't hear you.
Okay.
You're good.
I don't know that's I don't know whether that's good or bad, but.
Thank you for joining.
We just voted to approve the minutes, Wayne. I don't know if you had any questions on those.
I don't have any questions on them, Mr. Chairman, but if there's enough people there, I guess I would abstain. I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't believe.
Okay. Uh, very good. Let's move on then to the financial report.
Morning, Stan.
Okay, I just figured out how to zoom in on my Apple, so forgive me. So.
Welcome to the new world.
Hold the screen. I don't have a copy of this report. I'm going to go through the financials. Total current assets, almost $800,000. That's close to the end of last year. Property, plant, equipment, the same counts payable. We do have a schedule of accounts payable that's on the following pages. Net activity was of 800 or $8,000 for the year to date. Okay, so let's go to next page. We have receivables. It looks like it's. Looks like nine sufficient funds checks, I guess, and I don't know.
Do you want me to? Yeah, let me. So we did send. This is Casco Farm. We had two payments that had come through over the last one in October and one in March. Kathy Jo brought it to my attention. I sent them a letter on Monday, basically just addressing what's happening right now with COVID. I know that we're here for them, but also reminding them that, you know, these two payments were returned for non-sufficient funds and that they need to bring their account payable. And that was sent on Monday.
Okay, so it looks reasonable to me. The other adjustments, the $26,000 net number has been carried forward from the year-end audit. And let's go to the next page. Payables. We have payables of little over $1,000 and we have legal fees that have been carried over from 2017 as part of the audit. So I think maybe next year you ought to address that $8,000 of legal fees, what we're going to do with that. So let's go to the next page. Statement of activities. We have a total budgeted for month of April is $4,000 revenue and we had $1,300 come in. Year-to-date actual $31,000 of revenue. Our budget was 45. Looks like the rent for Shentrionics is the big difference between budget and actual. Let's see, that's about it for revenues. Go to expenditures. Item two, we had some software. I think that's that's like an ongoing software with Blue Storm. I can't remember, Carrie.
Yeah.
Talked about that. So it's not really in the budget, but it's an ongoing expense. Airport utilities. That's not in the budget either, and it's an expense. So those are the two negatives in our budget line. Total expenditures, 30, almost 40,000 for a year, 14,000 for the month. And there's our loss of $8,000 for the year-to-date. Oh, IT, Blue Storm, total care, rev root and secure remote from work. So that was something that wasn't expected. But total care and the web root, secure cloud backup is. We use it at our office and it's a very good service. I wish we had it a couple of years ago. And that's it for the statement of activities. Capital outlay. Looks like we have no activity there. And I think that's it. It's page five of five.
We have any question? Any questions for Stan?
Mr. Chairman, we now order how move the financials.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second. Pete Raymond.
Very good. We'll vote.
Burton, I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
How water, I.
Larson, I. Very good. Now I see in our minutes that we have an action item here. Do we need to approve this as a board? Do you?
Let's see, everybody.
Thanks, Stan.
Bye, Stan.
Yeah, this is the conversation that we had after the last audit regarding that amount of money that we've been holding for a couple of years now for Alphagen for legal fees. I know that previously we had attempted to try to see to get this cleared up. They haven't moved forward on it, and the advice that we have from the auditors was to get it cleared away. So this resolution is to move it from where it is right now and just add it back to our general operating fund.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? We have been carrying it for a long time, and I know we've reached out to them quite a few different times about it, so. I see no issue with doing this unless someone else does.
No, and it's not like we don't have the money if they come back to us and say, hey, what about these legal fees?
Yeah, right. I mean, we can always authorize it later.
Yeah.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion then to?
I'll make a motion to move it back to the general fund.
We have a second?
I'll second. Pete Raymond.
Very good. We'll vote.
Burton, I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
How water, I.
Larson, I. Okay, and then I see also, Carrie, we have an item here, new accounting software and cleaning up reports.
Yep, just a quick item I wanted to let you know. We've been working on trying to clean up some of our software systems here. One of the changes that we're making throughout the next few months is we're moving from Sage to QuickBooks. There's other, there's a few reasons to do it. One of them has to do with our CMS system that we use for the chamber side of things and the ability for QuickBooks to talk to it. The other part of it is the cost difference. Sage is like three times the cost that QuickBooks is. And in discussing it with our bookkeeper, we really thought that we could make this change and have it be smooth. So down the road, you know, once we finally make the change, our records might look slightly different, but they're doing what they can to to keep them the way that we have them right now. There's just a couple of things that we have to do, a few books to work out. So it's nothing that we're looking to do right the second we purchase the software. Kathy Jo is starting to make the transition. Really having through the end of the year to try to make it as perfect as we can and reflective of what we have now. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And I, when I, Stan and I were going over the financial report for this meeting, you know, there are things that we're trying to get cleaned up out of here. One of them was the, you know, the money for Alphagen for the legal fees. And another thing on the reports is just the what things are called, you know, under the part about expenses, revenues, it says Shentrionics Rent. You know, just cleaning up things like that. It really shouldn't say that anymore. Shentrionics hasn't been there in a long time. It should just reflect our airport building. So some of the names within the statement of activities are just sort of vague and not clear. So Stan talked with me about when we make this transition over to QuickBooks, it's a good time to clean up our reports. You know, we did have conversations about, you know, why there were some things that we're talking about each week that weren't budgeted. You know, when the budget process was happening in the fall, I was not as involved with it as I would be now. I don't know why those things weren't budgeted. The people who did those budgets aren't here anymore. So we're going to see what we can do to clean those things up in moving into the new year, but that's why you keep saying not budgeted. I don't know why there was nothing budgeted for airport expenses. You know, the stuff with the software, the transition to the server. I don't know why that wasn't there either. So we're going to do what we can to get this. So that's all.
Okay. Moving on to bills and invoices. We have the list in front of us. Anybody have any comments on the bills there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we know what I have a comment on this airport utilities again. I've commented on it before. Let's see, it's $700. Is there anything we can do over the summer to cut this down?
I know Stephen down the line has been up there to check it out, and my understanding was that there wasn't a lot we could do from where we are because of our need to maintain some kind of environment in there to keep keep things from deteriorating.
I actually, oh, sorry.
Steve, hang on. Steve, you muted yourself. Hang on.
Sorry. Alex and I had gone up in January. We turned all the heat back. I went back up three weeks ago. And some of the heat in the office sections were at 74 degrees. I have turned those back down. The thermostat is a programmable thermostat that operates with a vacation cycle and a weekend cycle and on-week cycle. So I don't know if it got turned back on just because of the computer programming that that thermostat or what. I did check the building last week and everything was at 52 degrees. Also, the overhead doors, both of them need bottom weather stripping. I can, you know, I can take care of that if you want me to. If I saw you to give me a hand and put that on, it's no big deal. But the doors, you can look right out underneath them. So that's got to be costing you guys some money. Those are the two maintenance things I see up there. And I also would ask a question about the water. I believe the well is shared with the building next door. I can check, I guess, with Isaiah Sutton on that, but I think the well is a shared well. And are we paying the full shot? If it is, are we paying the full shot for the pump and the filtration system?
Yeah, we're, we're providing water to that building through the service there is my understanding.
So we're paying for the we're paying for the pump and the filtration system?
I believe so.
Okay, so those are just some, some things I would point out about having walked through the building that may save us some money next year on utilities.
Yeah, I think we failed the budget for them because we thought the building was going to be rented out in January. We probably should put it in moving forward at some number, regardless of whether anybody was in there, just so we're covered in an event like this. Or create a contingency in our budget so that we have something that we could devote to issues like this that come up. And do we want to go ahead and have the weather stripping done? If it's going to save a little money, it seems like a good idea.
Yeah, Wayne outwater, I'll move that.
It will authorize. Stephen, do you have a ballpark on the amount?
Oh, gosh, Eric, I doubt it would cost $300. I mean, I'll go up and measure the door, see how that weather stripping is attached. You know, and I'll go up and I'll find somebody to give me a hand. I'll go and put that on for you. It's no big deal.
Yeah, Steve, just, just Randy, just let me know when you want to do it. I'll go up and help you.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like a deal. And I'll continue to buy into that building if that's on your with you guys.
And I don't know what kind of authorization we need to do this, but just to be on the safe side, we want to say we'll authorize up to $500 for whatever the materials are.
I'll identify back to my motion.
I'll second it. Brian Burton.
All right, so we have Wayne and Brian. So we'll go ahead and vote.
Burton, I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
How water, I.
Larson, I. All right, very good. And now we'll need to vote to approve the other bills and invoices. If there are no other questions, does somebody have a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills and invoices. Brian Burton.
We have a second?
I'll second. Pete Raymond.
Okay, and we'll vote.
Burton, I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
How water, I.
Larson, I. Very good. We'll move on to old business and let's take Pat with Tiffany and Saturn Solar here.
Wait, Eric, can you go back and do? There's an action item there. I need you to verbally authorize me to sign the checks because I don't have your signatures on the vouchers.
Okay, well, we've been doing that, right?
Yeah, I just, you need to have it just on the record that you, it's just for the minutes.
Okay, I, yeah, I just thought the governor hadn't authorized that. All right, so apparently we need to authorize Carrie to sign checks that would have formerly needed to be countersigned due to the amount.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
I'll water second.
Okay, and we'll vote.
Burton, I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
How water, I.
Larson, I.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to old business. We'll let Pat with the Saturn Solar go first since he's been patiently waiting on the line here.
Okay, well, right off the bat, thanks for everyone for having me this morning. Nice to, yes, meet informally everyone. I'm up here in the lovely city of Hamilton, Ontario, Canada. I am hoping at some point to come down to Cheneangle County. I recently joined Saturn Power about a week before we were told we had to work from home. So I'm getting up to speed with this Tiffany project. I do have about three work experience in New York State when it comes to solar though. So not new to solar in New York, but new to Saturn Power and this Tiffany project. I do understand that last month I did pass along an application and that was discussed. I wanted to just provide a quick update. Things that came over to me, as I understand it, was a request for a clearance. So we have had discussions with the FAA. We have a play application in right now. And we are expecting any day to hear response. From that, we are going, they will give us direction in terms of what they need us to do to make this solar project a reality. And so we are following everything to the letter once they give that application feedback. I think for the most part, I want to be able to just, you know, face through the name as well as if there's any questions or comments right, right off the bat. We are looking at construction sometime. Hopefully, if, you know, things start to normalize by September or October. We do have an engineering firm lined up to start the construction. And then it is just the case of one of the things that we want to get checked off in addition to the regular transit side of things is this pilot. So my finance guys are asking me, you know, like what, where do we stand with the pilot? You know, what, what rate have we settled on? I recognize it. It's still early days, but it is a case of I hear it almost every other week. So I wanted to be able to just, like I said, first introduce myself, also make myself available for any comments, questions right now. Or in the future, if you have questions or comments, you can pass them on to Carrie. Karen and I have been talking, so. That's, that's it in a nutshell. Once again, thank you for your time.
Carrie, have we heard, given an opportunity to the taxing jurisdictions to weigh in on this?
No, we were still, we were, Pat, last time you and I spoke, we were still kind of going back and forth about, you know, megawatt payout. And I kind of gave you back feedback from the board about what we were looking to do and you were going to go back and see what kind of numbers you can come back with. And I haven't seen that a change in that. So are you still negotiating that on your side?
Well, I think maybe it's just clarification on our side. We can present you with revised numbers. We do, we were a bit unsure in terms of how, how flexible. Because there is the, the Cheneangle project that that was at 4,500 megawatt. And we were wondering if that's, if that locked in or if there's some flexibility there. This is obviously something that we can plug, plug them up offline, Carrie, but that's where we stand with that.
I think we need to, yeah, I think we need to kind of come to some terms on that and then go back and look at the percentages of what you were, you were paying out before we can go to the taxing entities. And then we need to have a meeting with them, make sure they all understand. We need to have a public hearing. So, you know, if you have a September, October deadline of wanting to start the project, that's, we're really going to have to move forward on that fairly quickly because it takes time to do a public hearing and all that. So. Project before we approve the pilot.
Well, yeah, we do realize that. We don't want to be having any shovels in the ground. We do want to be able to do things. There is a process in place, right? So.
Right, okay. There was nothing in your application about a percentage to the school. It looked like 40% to the county, city, town, village, and then 60% to a 40/60 split, but with nothing to the school. So was that by design? Had you talked to the school and they, the Norwich School District?
At the time when we did the 40/60 split, we were unsure how much was going to go to the school. We knew that there was going to be some, but we hadn't signed a.
So if you can get those numbers to me, then we can have those conversations. That's the next step for me.
Okay, and I guess just maybe as a note to leave off on, I have been telling, speaking to our land folks, they have actually, we have some New York State land agents that are traveling around Cheneangle County. So our hope is this is not going to be the one and done project. I can do others as well, so.
Okay. Okay, when I get more information, I'll move forward on our.
Okay, yeah, I'll look to reach out to you maybe by the end of this week or the start of the following. And I think I'll drop off then if there are no other questions or comments. But like I said, I do appreciate everyone's time and it was nice to introduce myself.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Okay, thanks, guys. Have a good day.
All right, Carrie, so you'll pass on the information he gets to us moving forward. Obviously, and I don't know how everyone else feels, but chime in by all means, but if another community solar paid $4,500, we would, I think, need an awfully good explanation to do something different here, wouldn't we?
What he said to me when we had our conversation about that was that their project is much smaller with no room to really grow versus it's much, much smaller in size. Two and a half times smaller than the Norwich solar project. And I asked him, I said, well, with capacity, are you, are you going to be able to grow that? Like, we don't want to agree to something that's a little bit smaller for rate because of where you're sort of bound within, and then you start producing more or add on. And he said that that's not, that the space that they have and the design that they have, that's not possible. But I did tell him that he was going to have to come closer to the number for a similar type project and then have a good explanation as to why. The biggest thing was because it's, like I said, two and a half times smaller than the Norwich solar project. So their financial output of this is not as big as the other project. I don't know, you know, we can discuss that when they come back with a number.
Yeah, and that's fine, but you know, not to beat the dead horse, but it's, you know, an ongoing issue that we just don't have any framework for these decisions that I always hate to wade into something where you do something different for everybody and it's a, you know, a bowl of oatmeal that we're using to try and figure out, you know, what each person is going to pay with no, you know, it's awful nice if you can plug it into a formula and say, this is how we did it. We just heard everybody and we listen to their pitch and we nod and go, well, maybe yes or maybe no.
In the lines, long team and lines, Eric, the, after that webinar that he had a while ago on the on the prospects of what's going on with all these solar farms, it sounds like this isn't only going to be the last one coming into Cheneangle County. It sounded like there's going to be more. So I had talked with Shane about possibly having the county come up with a a sample ordinance for the towns to pass regarding to the solar farms. And the same thing could happen with us if we come up with a, what we, like you said, I agree, we should have a set pattern already with the numbers are going to be based on the solar farms and stuff and not be trying to come up with a new number every time we have to deal with one of these things.
Were there any guidelines included in the state budget? There was some indication that was going to happen.
I didn't see guidelines in terms of the megawatt payout. Mostly what was in the state budget was about, you know, size of projects and trying to move them forward and giving municipalities some authorization to do this quicker. That was basically. I mean, there must be, now that we've had a couple of them, I, we could probably put our heads together and come up with a formula, you know, based on what they're saying their output is and how much we're getting. We could, I'm sure we can come up with something to give us some numbers to work on. I mean, I don't, I don't think when it comes to solar, they're the same across the board. I know at first we were talking, well, community solar versus, you know, a wholesale project. Those are different animals, but now we're talking like the size of a solar facility and how does that affect it? So, you know, we take a look at the rate of what we're doing for Norwich solar and reduce it by the amount of what this size project is. I'm sure we can come up with a formula. That makes sense.
And just Carrie, you get the one done in green now too, right? So you've got those, we took those two pilots. You've got at least two to start from.
Right, yeah, that one's a wholesale project, so it's a little different than a community solar, but, yeah, which, by the way, they did email me this week and want to try to get the ball rolling again. So just, you know, pocket, we haven't heard from them in a while. Yeah, but that's definitely, this isn't the last one. I know Pat had reached out to me in addition to this and had said if I, you know, I've heard of other people who are looking to property or interested in having this, please let them know. They're continuing to look. And I actually did send him one, someone that had reached out to me that had some land for sale. So I do know that we're going to see more of these.
Didn't, wasn't there some feeling that the state was going to take over the management of these?
For certain size projects. I don't think any, either of these are that large. They were for larger projects.
Okay. All right, well, anything we can do to further the cause of having more definition around this would be great. Okay, anything else on solar? Let's move on then to FEMA disaster grant.
Not really too much to update on this. I've continued to get them information for our FEMA grant being sort of slowed down with what's happening right now with COVID-19. They just emailed me yesterday asking for some documents that I uploaded. So we're continuing to move forward on that, but just no new news yet.
Okay, airport building opportunities?
Yeah, continuing to do this. I know I've been doing this since day one. A couple of times I've been close. Yeah, continuing to do this. I know I've been doing this since day one. A couple of times I've been close. I did have a conversation right before, I say, I like to say like the time before and after COVID, right before COVID, had a conversation with Evans Farm. And they are looking at expanding their operation and needing a bigger facility. And I did give them a tour of the airport building and he loved it with everything that happened right after the COVID that sort of went under the, you know, on the DL. But I have reached back out to him to see if they're still looking at another facility. I know despite so many people that are struggling right now, their operation is doing quite well because of what they do. So I did reach out to see if he was still interested in, in using the facility. So we're continuing to pursue options and I've talked with Steve a few times about some opportunities and, you know, we keep trying to align it with the right, right kind of renter.
Okay. Any questions for Kerry on any of the old business? Okay, I guess we're moving on then to new business.
Okay. So real quick, you know, because the IDA is one of the economic arms of the county, I just wanted to update you. I do send you updates sometimes through email about what we're doing here at Commerce, which affects what we do as the IDA for economic development. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been doing to try to help businesses and help our, our economic economy here in Shenango County. So I, I sit on the southern tier regional control room as a proxy for Chairman Wilcox. So every day we have a meeting with the state and we talk about, you know, the rules, the regulations, trying to get some clarification as far as phasing. I'm able to ask questions about specific businesses where it doesn't seem to be clear. It's been very informative, very helpful. Yesterday, Marcus Flint and Matt Beckwood joined me for the regional call because they had a couple of people from the state to talk about enforcement. And actually the laws surrounding this because there seems to be, you know, the arm of what public health and our law enforcement can do, you know, are these executive orders laws? Aren't they laws? How do we pursue if somebody isn't following them? We're all, all of the counties were having issues with this. So we had a really good conversation yesterday about this to get some clarification moving forward. I've been working very closely with Marcus and Matt throughout this entire last few weeks of helping to get businesses phased in and offer some clarification between our three offices. We've been taking phone calls from businesses. People with, you know, questions, some people with complaints, but just doing the best we can to try to stay as up to date. Marcus is handling the public health side. Matt handles the emergency management side and I've been spearheading the business end of it. Last Friday, we did a webinar together. It actually went very well. And we talked about reopening guidelines for the state. It's actually posted on our YouTube page and I have this PDF which I could send to you. It was all about the phasing in, what phase one looks like, you know, some of the industries. You know, what businesses need to know, how they need to self-certify. It's definitely, there's been a lot of moving parts to this and it changes every day. So I watch the governor's report every day. I do the control room call every day and really just kind of be a touch point with the state. The let me just see. Oh, and then every week, every Tuesday, there is a Shenango County call, a services call about this where we get updated numbers and talk about services. And that's every Tuesday. And the last few, they've put me on the agenda and I've been able to talk about what we're doing to support businesses and help answer questions. So I just thought it was important that you knew what we were doing here, that we're trying to do what we can to help our local economy and help businesses come out of this. You know, looking at our numbers of how many businesses and people we've actually talked to, we've talked to over two hundred and fifty individual touchpoints with businesses from around the county. Some of them are Commerce Shenango Chamber members, some aren't. I think it's been a really great way for us to show what we can do to help our local economy. And it's really been a help to spotlight what Commerce Shenango does. So, you know, that's the IDA, it's DCC, it's the chamber, you know, tourism, all wrapped up in one. So if you're looking for a little bit of the silver lining about this, I think it's just, it's been great to be able to show what we can do and what a good partner we can be with the county. So just thought that, just wanted to update you on those things and see if you had any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Kerry on new business? Okay, very good then. Any other business to transact at this meeting? I assume we have no need of an executive session today. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn then?
I'll water, yes.
Burton, second.
Okay, so we have Wayne motion, Burton, second. We'll vote.
Bert and I.
Raymond, I.
Gibbon, I.
I'll water, I.
Larson, I. Thank you all for participating. Once again, remotely, one of these days we will sit in the same room again.
Randy, I'll talk to you next week about that door.
Okay, thanks, Steve.